Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is now six o'clock and it is designated time for this special session of the Randolph County Commissioners as we conclude the budget process tonight that will carry this county and all of our departments through the next fiscal year, starting July 1 of 2023 and going through June 30 of 2024. And from looks of the crowd here tonight, it's like y'all's lives is in our hands or something, whether or not you're going to be able to eat tomorrow morning. And that's the way it should be. And I want to say, and hopefully I won't forget later, but all of you have been involved in this process over the last month, and it's most appreciated in keeping us informed and educated and sharing your needs. You've done that very professionally as we've gone through this process, and that's most appreciated. I do want to note a couple of things. We are being streamed live on Facebook, but we're not on YouTube tonight. As you know, we're in a different area, so that will be recorded and posted later on YouTube. But tonight, we're just live on Facebook for the Commissioners and the others here. These mics are a little less sensitive than what we have at the courthouse, so please speak directly into the mics clearly whenever you are speaking tonight, making motions, asking questions. So with that, we will get this process started. This is our agenda for tonight, and the first item is closeout budget amendments, an accounting process we have to go through each year at this time. Talking with Will, he's going to present each one of these together, and if any Commissioner has one that you want to take out to vote separately, but if not, we will vote on the group in one motion once Will completes his presentation. So if you have one that you want more about or vote separately, just please let me know and we will do that, but I'll turn it over to Will for the budget amendments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our last chance to clean up a few things. The first two on the list, there's two budget amendments for the Tourism Development Authority. We have a special revenue fund that kind of matches what the TDA Board approves for the actual budget. The first one was for 11,140, and the Board approved that, and the TDA Board approved that on May 18th. There's a second one for the TDA for 2,500. The Board, TDA Board, will consider that at their Wednesday meeting coming up later this week. So we're a little bit out of order, but again, you know, this is the last chance to get some of these things approved. Next one on the list was for the Site Development Capital Project Fund. As you recall, back in 2020, we advanced to Energy some money, $600,000, to relocate the power lines. That was to be refunded when they had a customer at the mega site, which has happened, and the last I heard, we were supposed to be getting that, those funds returned pretty shortly. We have the I-74 Industrial Center project where we are going to straighten the road out, and DOT is currently studying that, but there's going to be a cost involved to relocate that. So this, these funds is a good start for the cost for strengthening the road if the Board so chooses. Next is an adjustment to the Ashboro High School renovation project. We need to make sure we cover all the professional services that are related to that. They were doing some concrete work at the end. There were some professional services fees that are, need to be covered with that. That's $70,000 to finish that project out for professional services. It's not adding anything to the project, just moving the funds from construction to professional services. Next is some final closeout projects. We have a Juvenile Day Reporting Center renovation project that came in under budget. We have some funds available. We have a courthouse renovation project which finished up last, last summer. There were some supply chain issues that kind of carried it over, and we never did do the final transfer to clear that out. So we have a, and then there's some leftover funds that can then move to the capital reserve as well. So there's three amendments, one's for the JDRC renovation capital project, one's for the courthouse renovation project, show those funds coming in and cleaning that one up, and we'll be able to close both of those projects. And then the remaining 27,609 goes to the reserve. And then finally, this isn't a budget amendment, but we have the $2.5 million grant that we got from Division of Environmental Quality, which we are using to update or upgrade the connection to, from Seagull Metropolitan Water District to the City of Ashboro. We've done the design work on that, but we can't apply for any of those grants until DEQ approves the bid design and everything, which has not happened yet. So at June 30th, I fully expect that, you know, we will have advanced, you know, up to $250,000, and I just want to get the Board approval to show that as an advance. We will get reimbursed, it's just that at June 30th, year end, I just need a Board approval to show that that general fund has advanced $250,000.
Okay. Any questions to Will on, on the budget amendments? Think it all? All right. If it's a pleasure of the Board, I will ask that, have a motion to approve all six of the budget amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make, I'll make that motion to, to approve the closeout budget amendments as stated in the agenda. They have to be cleaned up for, before our June 30th year end, so I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and it passes unanimously. The next item is the Capital Improvement Plan. Will?
Thank you, sir. Just briefly, you know, we're wrapping up the Ashboro High School project, the Detention Center, and the Northgate project. Northgate just has a little bit that we'll probably do for the clinic area, but for the most part, that project's pretty close to being finished. We'll be bidding out soon the Ag Center, the Public Health Renovation Human Services Center up on Balfour Avenue, I-74 sewer work, and Seagull Sewer Line improvements once that design is approved. And still pending, we still have out there a Historic Courthouse project, rural water and sewer improvements, where we have the funding for, from ARPA that we just haven't decided on those projects yet. I will be meeting with the both school systems here shortly to find out what their overall needs are going to be over the next couple of years, which we can formulate into a plan, and the Board can address that in a future capital improvement plan.
Any questions to Will on the capital improvement plan? There's been a lot going on, still is, but keeping up with it.
Any questions?
All right. Next item is to approve the school and fire tax rates. We have the two school systems, Archdale Trinity Supplemental Tax District and the Ashboro City Schools Supplemental Tax District. The Archdale Trinity, they're doing a revenue neutral from 9.22 cents down to 7.03 cents. And since that's my area, I will make a motion to approve and set the Archdale Trinity Supplemental Tax District at .0703 cents.
Second.
Have a second discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's approved. Ashboro City Schools, current rate is 14.39 cents. It's going to 11.53 cents on revenue neutral. Is there a motion to approve and set the Ashboro City Supplemental Tax District at .1153?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make that motion to set that rate at .1153.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Those in favor will let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes. Fire department tax rates, and this has been one of the issues that we, we have been working on and listening to for, well, actually for months, as we've gone through this process with each department, and they've been working with us and keeping us informed. The Board is aware, the public is aware, that all of the fire departments, this is my recollection, never happened before. There's always three or four different ones, but this year, all 18 of the fire departments are requesting that their rates stay as they are. And of course, what makes this different or more significant this year is that we've gone through reevaluation. At the same time, there are a lot of issues dealing with our fire departments and all of our public service and public safety issues and departments in the county, and that includes EMS, that includes the Sheriff's Department, DSS, so many. And I can tell you that counties and cities all around us are trying to hire our people after we pay to train them. I grew up in a home where my dad was a volunteer fireman. That's, that's almost unheard of today. Volunteer firemen have to be trained and equipped and insured, just like a paid, a paid fireman is. But a lot of issues, radios for communication, so that is the issue that we've been hearing from our various fire departments around the county. I've said to the public many times, when we dedicated this building over here, if we're the one who makes a call in the middle of the night and needs help, our house is on fire, our child is hurt, our wife's having a stroke, but we'd be mighty glad to see somebody pull up in our driveway to, to start providing help. So that's where we are for this Board, and that's the request that has been before us through this whole process, is that the rates remain as they are. I, I would say, some of these discussions too, we still have some departments that are not filing proper financial statements, and that's going to be expected as we go forward. It has, it has to be, if we're going to be accountable to the public, then we have, we have to make those statements available. And we have some departments that have not done that. Also, there won't be any more tax increases for, for some time. So if that, if this is approved, then those are the expectations as we go forward. So I'm going to see comments from the Board, how you, how you choose to proceed with, with this request for the fire departments, all fire departments, that their rates remain as they are currently.
Mr. Chairman, just to give a little context to the amount of dollars we're talking about, a little math from what Will had provided, the, the old levy was almost right at $12 million. The new levy, based on the increase in the tax values, would be $16.3 million for all 18 departments, and that's about a $4.4 million increase, or about 37% overall, which is a pretty hefty ask. When, when I was growing up, I'd go to my parents for a pretty hefty ask. I'd usually get what I wanted, but I had to have a lecture about it beforehand.
So here's the lecture beforehand?
It is a pretty heavy ask, but there are
Needs out there.
As far as the number of volunteers that were, you know, are not out there anymore, the need to hire folks. Equipment is expensive if you can get it. So there, there are a lot of things out there. What concerns me by coming and asking is one, that each and the individual fire departments kind of loses their uniqueness. And there's going to be some, some instances with departments that are going to need, especially in my area, I'm thinking specifically of Julian, are going to need some special assistance and, but that's going to be, for the next several years, is going to be an exception rather than a rule. So as the Chairman said, I think this, this is something that we're not going to want to see every year. 37% increase is a lot for the taxpayer, and it ranges from 27%, 28% up to 43% for the 18 different departments, excluding Julian. The Chairman mentioned the audits. There are 11 of the departments that are in good standing and complete their audits. Two others are essentially not June, June 30th year ends, so they're either, I think one was in March, another may have been later in the year. So they're in good, I consider them in good stead, but there are five that are not in good standing. And by voting this type of tax increase, there is absolutely no excuse for not having an audit, and have it done in a timely manner. There are also some audits that are being done that are what I call single statement audits. That's not going to be acceptable. You need financials with full disclosures, full footnotes, full audit opinions on all three financial statements. I come from a corporate, private background. I call them balance sheet income statement and statement of changes in cash flows. That's what we need. You've got the money to do it, so do it. This is taxpayer money. The last thing, I know there was a couple of departments that are using, when your department, you want to save up for some equipment, you know, you, you have some, some funds out there, but don't be investing the funds in the stock market. That's just, you know, with taxpayer dollars, that's, that's not going to be looked upon, at least in my, my view. As taxpayer dollars, put it in something that's safe, you can get decent CD rates now. It's not like it's half percent or something. You can get four, 4%. And you might, you know, as far as the audits go, you've used your buying power as the, by banding together as departments. Do the same thing with an auditor. Get one auditor to do all the 18, sign them, get, get a contract, do 18 of them. Do the same, have the same spreadsheets. It'd be very simple and easy to do that, so I encourage you to do that. So, Mr. Chairman, those are my concerns. I think that we need to do this. I haven't gotten a lot of pushback from the community. I think there's still a lot of confusion over tax neutral, revenue neutral, and I think we may hear in the first of, when did they go out, Deborah?
They go out July 17.
July 17. I'm going to try to be out of town next week, if it's anything like it was with the revaluation, so. But it's something I think we need to do, but we need to be cognizant that it is a taxpayer dollars. End of lecture, sorry.
It's, it's a good lecture. It's needed, and we, we have listened to all the fire departments, all 18 of them, pretty much the same message at every one of them. Some, some of them, as I've said before, there are issues in other departments across the county, especially where help, where labor positions are concerned. We're in a constant struggle with competition. We've lost some key positions even this month, so that is important. But, and the issues that, that have been expressed here are showed across this Board. This is not a one or two, it is, it is shown by every member of this Board as we've gone through this process, as we've listened to the presentations, and we've discussed those presentations among ourselves after we leave, what we've heard, how we feel about it. And again, it is a part of providing a service to the citizens. The rate, the fire rate, has everything to do with homeowners insurance, and that is a savings, and without it, it would be a very costly situation to every homeowner in this county. So our fire departments are very important, and we see it that way and make that clear. We expect to be treated the same way in terms of what we need to have in answering to the public for how the money's used. So with that, any other, I'll ask for a motion and then for more discussion if wanted and needed. Is there a motion on the fire tax rates?
Well, I don't know if this is a little brief, brief, brief discussion and a motion probably. I have got some pushback. We talked about, you know, the theory of raising, or excuse me, lowering our general rate down to 50 cent, you know, that was kind of applauded, maybe still high for some people. The fire tax thing was what I got more pushback on personally than probably anything else, because, thanks for the math, you know, 37%. But in light of recent events, i.e. last night, when I needed some help, four firefighters showed up. EMS truck got there, I'm still here. So if that happens when I'm in farmer next time or somewhere else, I'll sure will hope, or climax, or wherever it is, guys, I hope you're there real quick and everything. So I would make a motion to put it rates, where they are currently.
Do I have a second and a motion?
I'll second.
Further discussion, good comments, Kim. Any other discussion on this issue?
I'd like to, I'd like to second Mr. Allen's comments about the financial statements. I know it's important, I know it's expensive, but you're right, when, when some, some of the districts are using full accrual financial statements and this type of thing, and others are just kind of getting out of cash receipts and dispersals and this type of thing. Oh, sorry. It's, it's kind of, you're looking at dollars and cents here with what you're doing, and really, it, it's not fair to those that follow that rule, the full accrual rule, it's not fair to them to go through all that. And yes, it is expensive, but it also tells, tells the general public, they want to know what, how stable these, these fire departments are. So again, I, I'd go along with you, David, in the fact that these, these things need to be seriously looked at and in place, in place, so that all of the financials have the same look with the same level of audit stance. That's all I'll say about that.
Any other comments or discussions? Those in favor of the motion to retain the fire taxes at their current rates, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and it is unanimous. So again, thank all of you for participating in, in this process. Next item, there are some fee schedule changes. A very lengthy list, some of them are made the same. You've had a copy of this, if anyone have a question about any of the fees. I think more, it does include some ambulance fee increases. Donovan, you want to respond to this?
Yeah, when does that go into effect?
I just want to say, I failed to mention it at June 8th. I presented it to you. If you want to make changes, we can save the line until next month if you want to have further discussion, because I forgot. Ranges from 13 to 21% in certain different places. Based on the actual costs.
What's the pleasure of the Board? You want to bring this back next month?
Donovan, I think a lot of this is likely for Medicaid, to get it up to Medicaid reimbursable rates too. Is that?
That is correct. It brings us up to the Medicare allowable, the fee codes you see on the sheet that I provide are Medicare allowable.
Right.
And mileage stays the same, it's been the same percent. We'll get it.
I mean, I, I don't know any reason why we couldn't go ahead and
I mean, we've had it hand, so.
Yes, we have. I haven't heard anything from anybody. If you wanted to do that, but I'm certainly, I'm all for it. We've gone see. Do I have a motion?
Is that for the whole group?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second to adopt the fee schedules and election poll worker pay rates?
Yes.
As presented. Further discussion, questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and they are adopted. The consideration of budget inclusions of outside agencies with Commissioner involvement. Commissioners that serve on these agencies cannot vote on their budget. That's the reason we're bringing these back. It's really a part of the process, it's part of the budget, but we have to vote in this matter. The first one is the Randolph County Economic Development Corporation. We had a public hearing on that last Monday night for their funding, and since I am on that Board, I will have to, I will ask the Board to recuse me from, has to be recused from voting on that, that budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Now, do I have a motion to approve the Randolph County Economic Development Corporation budget?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes four to nothing. Next one is the budget allocation for Sand Hill Center. Commissioner Allen serves on that Board. Make a motion that he be recused from voting on the Sand Hill Center budget.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. David, you are recused.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the allocation for Sand Hill Center?
I'll make that motion in the amount of $844,000.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that as well.
I will say, and I mentioned this when that budget was presented, that $844,000 has been there for 19 consecutive years. We've never had a budget like that, and a lot of change is taking place in these LMEs, and it's not likely that that's going to stay that way for maybe not even another year, but we'll find out more. All right. Next is the
You would, you would
Do I have a motion to approve the Sand Hill Center? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes four to nothing. Next one is the budget allocation for Family Crisis Center. Commissioner Kidd is a member of that Board. Make a motion
Can I just make a motion to recuse myself?
Yes.
Somebody second it?
I'll second it. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Commissioner Kidd is recused. Do I have a motion to approve the Family Crisis Center budget allocation?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner McDowell made the motion. Commissioner Haywood does the second. Further discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Four to nothing. Thank you all. Okay. This next item is to consider a designation of Toyota battery manufacturing property taxes. As that project is evolving and the values are increasing literally by the day over there, as the buildings are going up and on now, and the anticipated revenue that will come from that project, we're going to have some more school capital needs in, in the short term. Others, and rather than just, we've had some conversations, and this, this is really not for a motion or that sort a motion or that sort of thing, but just for some discussion, and it can be ongoing discussions, but sort of, we set that aside, do we have a rainy day fund, or how do we handle the Toyota taxes when they start coming in? Of course, we're committed to, for incentive reimbursements on that project, of course, as we go forward, but still, it'll be a significant benefit to the county as we do that. So anybody want to have any comments? Or as I said, it'll be a working process, we're not trying to set a policy tonight, but just making you aware that is an issue and how we need to address. Will you want to make any comments here?
No, I think the proposal was that the special revenue fund would be set up to collect, when we receive the distributions, you know, tax distributions from Toyota, set it in the special revenue fund. The incentives would be paid out of that, and what's left is available for the commissioners to be strategic in how you use that. And so we'll bring it up now because this upcoming year will be the first year that, you know, Toyota's paying major, some major taxes, but.
Aren't we getting close to a billion? What are we getting over there?
The actual taxes?
No, the values are.
No, it's not close to that. Well, you know, the, at the revale, January the first, it's still construction progress. So there's not much, you know, they continue to work very, very strongly, so when we have the valuation at January first of 2024, it's really going to kick in some.
Right.
But it depends on how fast their actual construction keeps going.
Right. Right. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, one, one thing that in the ag community has been talked about is farmland preservation. I saw, I think the, with kind of our cultural commissioner, Steve Trox, indicated that over a million acres of farmland could be lost in the next several years. And one of the things, I know Toyota is committed to environmental awareness, and that did take a significant amount of farmland, and one of the things I would hope this board might consider is some, some type of program. We've got some ideas about how that could be recycled to preserve farmland in the county, especially in the eastern side of the county. So just want to put that out there. I know that the voluntary ag district board is, has some thoughts on that as well. So when the time comes, I'd like to keep that on the radar going forward because it, that site did take a significant number of farms and farmland over there. And I think it'd be good to kind of recycle that back, to loss of that farmland, to protect farmland in the area.
Very good. Any other comments? All right, so we are now down to this proposed Randolph County budget for 2324. As y'all know, we've gone through pre-departmental presentations, the requests that have been made, some of those have been included, a lot of them have been included in this budget. In particular, several positions are not included in this budget. It is recommended, and you'll see this in these numbers, and really going back to the public safety issue here, that we talked about a little bit with the fire departments a while ago. EMS, we still have trouble hiring, we have trouble training. Randolph Community College has always trained our paramedics, EMTs, and we've had some issues with the timing of that, delays in getting that done. So one of the proposals that we had was to bring that in-house and to create a paramedic academy, a paramedic in-house training facility. So a lot of those things were not included in the budget. We've had meetings, follow-up meetings, Mr. Allen and I met last week with Hal and Will, Joey, going over these issues, and a strong feeling was that this really needs to be done. Now, in the budget, there's, there's a cost of living, there's a, I think, four hundred thousand dollar fund set aside for market adjustments. I know that involves Sheriff's Department, and our environmental, we lost two environmental specialists out of three, we lost two-thirds of our environmental specialists this, in the last month, one to Moore County and one to Guilford County. So trying to address that. Just a couple of things that came out from our, and then the focus has been on these adjustments and some add backs for EMS in that department. We're adding back for, I would say on the revenue side, we have raised, Will has raised the estimate for sales tax revenue. His original budget was at two percent. To fund these additions, we raised the sales tax growth projection to five percent. Put that in perspective, in this current year, sales tax is fourteen percent. So we've done well, people spending, spending money. So if it's cut in half, we'd still, we'd still be ahead of the game a little bit, but we think that's good. There will be some money coming to the county for the Medicaid expansion to help pay for some of these positions, some that are in the budget. We talked about fees a while ago, we adopted those fees. The fees that's in this budget are the same as they were this year. So the, the increases that we just approved is not a factor in revenue on this budget. So that's, that's another, a little buffer we have there also in projecting some additional revenues. I will say, this, this budget, to balance it, does not include any appropriation of fund balance, and we've done that in recent years. We always make it up as the year goes by and the revenues come in, but in this case, this year, we did not have to budget any of our fund balance, so we're okay with that. So with that, the proposed changes are to add a fire inspector, three, and basically add another shift of paramedics in the field, in an ambulance, additional, that's four positions, four paramedics, four field training officers. The academy, the paramedic academy includes a training officer to do the training and hiring ten new paramedic positions. The training officer would be hired immediately, the ten positions in order to advertise and hire would start January the first. Most of the turnover in EMS is on the night shift. So the proposal is that we add a pay differential of ten percent for the night shift. I think, Donovan, isn't it like nine out of ten or something like that, that you've lost to come from night shift work? So we're trying to address that. Again, we're trying to hold on, the people, we get them trained, we want to keep them here, we want to be able to continue to provide the services. That's a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That, those positions to add and put another ambulance on the road in the field, they have to have heart monitors, defibrillators, CPR equipment, and that's for equipment, capital outlay is another a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So this increase is a million, three forty-three, eight ninety-nine, all for EMS. There was nothing in the original budget for education. So to fund Randolph County Schools, one million, five nineteen, nine ten, with their request, that would, we, on current expense, we have to fund both systems equally per pupil. So to fund the county, we play off the county that's the biggest system, then the Ashburn City Schools would be four forty-two, seven eighty-four. That's actually a little more than what their request was, but when we meet the per pupil, that's how, that's how the numbers come out. We had some ribbing, we had some discussions in one of the meetings for vehicles, I think, between cooperative extension and building maintenance. So to solve that problem, we're giving them both trucks. So two for building inspections, I mean, building maintenance and one vehicle for cooperative extension. But with the schools, the schools request is a million, the total, million nine sixty-two, six ninety-four, that's fifty-six and a half percent. So for public safety and public education in this county, ninety-five point two four percent of these changes are for those two things. To provide public safety and provide funding for the education in this county, and I think that tells you how this board feels about our, our job here. And they say government should do, not do, should do for people what they can't do for themselves. And we don't drive ambulances, and we, we don't know how to deliver those services, we don't know how to go out when there's a breaking and entering and all the things in the middle of the night and twenty-four hour calls, we don't know how to do that. But, so that's, that's the focus of the changes, the additions that we made with this budget. We did add, there was an increase in requests from senior adults, basically for the meals that are delivered to the needies of our county. I don't know if some of you were there when, when Mark made his presentation, but the percentage of, of people, our, our population is greater in the over sixty-five than it is in the zero to seventeen years. And that, that's a concern. That zero to seventeen is people we're going to be looking to, to fill these jobs. So, and senior adults has to meet those needs. So we're adding back thirty, the thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars for senior adults to, for those meals for our seniors here in the county. So all of that, the revenues and, and the additions are balanced at three million, four seventy-one, eight fifty-one. The manager's proposed budget is a one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one ninety-five, one seventy-nine. Our final budget is a hundred and seventy-two thousand, a hundred and seventy-two million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand and thirty dollars. So that's a, that's a breakdown of the additions that we put back. We feel confident in, in the revenue stream that we will have. The six hundred thousand, it's coming back from Duke Energy, that was for the design of the power lines at the mega site, and you've heard, replying that to the, straightening the, the road up at I-74 industrial park. We got a little over a million dollar refund from the county schools for the Trinity Middle School Project. It came in under budget, so we've set that money aside for expansion, and we will have some more funds coming that was originally targeted for the hospital, that will not be needed, and for the dealing with public health, which includes our health department and social services, we will use those funds for expansion and to meet the requirements for Medicaid expansion. So that's, that's where we are with this budget, that's the recommendation that's before this board. And I'll ask for questions or comments, and then we'd have a motion on the budget and have an adoption, a motion to adopt this budget, which would also set the tax rate for the county at fifty cents. That's from sixty-three point two seven cents down to fifty cents, and that will go into effect July the first. We told, we told the citizens of the county, when new values were mailed, that we would do revenue neutral, and that's what we've done. And we continue to deliver services to the citizens, and I think this, say here, in those areas where it is most needed. I know that the sheriff, the money we set aside will help him to retain his positions and provide some pay increases for deputies over there. So that's, that's all a part of this budget as we go forward. So. Comments, sir?
I'd just like to make one little comment about the senior adults, about the Senior Adult Association. In conversation with Chad Williams and Student Services at RCC last week, I found out that they work sometimes to help get transportation for their students that are in job training programs and they don't have transportation, and so they are able to work with our senior adults and the transportation system, our CATS, and get transportation for these, you know, people of whatever age that are in school at RCC. So it provides far more than, you know, meals on wheels and, and services for seniors, and I just thought that was important to note. I also think it's important to make a comment about the academy. Many counties have done that, and it seems to be in large part because of the scheduling and having consistency in educating your people, and it would be hard for a program to walk around that if it is not done in-house. So I do think that that will be more effective for us, so.
I'll, one other comment. You know, all the outside agencies made presentations to us and sent in requests. You did not hear any of that in this process. We will deal with those in order with strategic planning money, that's the money from the landfill, our landfill contract, after July the first. That, that will not be a part of this budget. We will deal with that with strategic planning money this time. We haven't done that before, we've done some one way, some another, but those agencies will be, will be dealt with, with strategic planning money after July the first. So other comments?
I just got a quick comment and maybe a question for Donovan on the academy, again, same subject. And of course, you know I won't qualify people showing up. So, the, so on that academy, you know, when you bring it in-house and do that, are you, your, your training officer, is he going to be an adjunct professor from a different community college system, or is that, how does that work? Is that, you know, we had that discussion.
Primarily the training officers are more than instructors either in RCC or other community college, but the advantage of that, our medical doctor, Dr. Supire, is part of nature, will also be able to bring in doctors to produce the sit-in, course work like cardiology or OBGYN.
Or pediatrics.
Pediatrics, which, hey, what's coming next? Yeah, those resources as well for the diagnostic training and.
So they will be affiliated somehow as an adjunct with a community college system? Well, and I know we had a pretty, I felt like, important meeting, the chairman and myself and you and a bunch of your staff about, you know, the training at Randolph Community College and how that's just kind of, have we ever heard back from them, anything at all?
We've gone back to solid, we weren't able to get, they wanted to get their schedule worked out, but they told me we weren't, we always made it to ours.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So we're still, we don't, we're still in the works to plug our resources.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that was just, I mean, that's kind of disappointing for me, which I'm glad we're doing this, we got to take the bull by the horns and get it done. Again, I want highly qualified people there, but it's just kind of interesting that we can get a couple other community college systems in the state to work with us hand in hand, and the guy across the street we're having some problems with, so.
With this academy, the only reason we will need community colleges for their accreditation.
Yeah.
We're credited for content at our department, not for curriculum or, on our program.
You all explained that well, so, but thank you, I didn't mean to drag you into it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I think, as, as always, with Hal and Will and the department heads and everybody involved in the budget, Will's staff, we generally have our planning retreat in February and kind of set some priorities, and Will and Hal, they headed up getting it done, appreciate them doing that because they come back with a budget that we've asked them to present. And we've added a few things here, based on what we've heard in the, in the budget meetings that we've had, public meetings last couple weeks, but I'm always impressed with the job that they do. But I'm always impressed with the job that they do. We ask them to do something. They take that, run with it, and come back with something that we, we don't have to do the heavy lifting. It's what it amounts to. So appreciate their work and their recommendations. And I think the budget is good. Our department heads are always cognizant of costs, and we appreciate that. I'm very pleased that we can go revenue neutral when so many of our other municipalities are not. And so I think it's important that we value the taxpayer's dollar. And I think in this budget, we're doing that. This is, every budget's a little bit different. A couple of years ago, when we were dealing with not knowing what was going to happen with COVID, that was a shot in the dark on that budget. So I won't say this is a, I think this is my ninth one. This is not the hardest one we've ever done, but they're all different and have different things that we have to deal with. But I appreciate what Will and Hal and their staff do.
And I will say, there's still a lot that was not included in this budget, and in particular, in positions. Now, if you remember last year, we went through pretty much the same process, basically with vehicles. As our year goes along and we kind of see where we are and we're trailing in with our revenues, sometime around the first of the year, calendar year, we might come back and look to see how we're doing. Some of those more pressing needs, we can reconsider that. We've done that the last couple of years. So we've... I think this is, we feel a little better on this budget than what we've done in the last two or three years. But the way things are going with the academy, we've got a lot of development that's still not reflected in here, as far as revenue is concerned either. Pretty significant projects up in Archdale, Technemark here, Energizer Battery here in Ashboro. A lot of those things taking place outside of the Toyota project. So I think that all of those are boding well for our future. So but at the same time, they put pressure on these very things that we're trying to address here. And I think you're seeing that in getting out and support for this EMS, our emergency services. Some of these we've looked at for two or three years, and we still have some out there to be done. We've got a tower that's going up and other things yet to come. So our fire departments still have the radios. There might be some money in the state budget, but at best, it wouldn't cover maybe half of what the cost of those radios are for our fire department. So we had hoped for a little better result on that, that we'll take what we can get. So with that, there's no more discussion. Do I have a motion on the '23-'24 Randolph County budget?
Well, nobody else would allow it. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023, 2024 with the following changes you had outlined and set the ad lorn tax rate at 50 cents per hundred dollars of valuation, which produces a budget of $172,667,030. I'm an accountant. I can't even read that. It's a big number. I wasn't expecting it to have three...
Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion on this budget? Hearing none. Those in favor of adopting the budget as presented and as revised, let it known by saying aye. Aye. Oppose no. Budget passes unanimously. So we have a budget for 2023-'24. And to all of you that have been loyal and helpful in keeping us through this process, we thank you for that. And it's, I tell you, most counties don't do it like this, folks. We have great cooperation here through our departments, and in particular, those that are out here on the firing line all the time. And I hope that you sense the appreciation and the significance that this budget presents. And we look forward to having a good year together. And again, thank all of you for taking your part and keeping us informed and helping us get through this process. So we have a budget. We have one more agenda item. We've had some conflicting information, but there is a Eastern Piedmont, North Carolina home, and that's a NC home, H-O-M-E consortium. And it has to do with subsidized housing. A lot of municipalities are getting into that. This one, the lead agency is the City of Burlington. We can join whether or not we ever take a part in it. It's still to be determined. We get two seats on that board. Davidson County, one of the requirements is it has to be congruent. And Davidson County wants to join, and they can't join if we don't join. Now, that in itself is not a reason to do it. This does not commit us to any funding. And but we'll join and then I guess find out what it's all... I hate to say that, but it's some... Commissioner Haywood over to the COG office last year. Said in on a little presentation. There's been some more changes since then, but it's there. If a developer wants to take advantage of it, it'll be there. So but this is a motion for us to approve a resolution of the county supporting the creation of the Eastern Piedmont, North Carolina Home Consortium.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things, there's more than just us in Davidson.
Oh, yeah.
I remember seeing the information, but I don't remember all the counties.
Alamance, Guilford, I think Rockingham, Caswell. Pretty much those that were in the old original region, GCOG.
Guilford's not.
Yeah, Guilford, they have their own.
They have their own, yeah.
It's Alamance, Caswell, Davidson, Randolph, and Rockingham. Lead agency being the City of Burlington.
Burlington's been in it for some time, and that's the reason they're the lead agency in it. So that's where we are. Do I have a motion to support the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion to approve the resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, let it be known my second.